So our first order of business, we have three retirees that we would like to recognize. And I'm going to ask Andrea to do the first one.
I would like to talk about Maureen DeLuca, who this year has been a sixth grade special ed manager, case manager, but in the past has been eighth grade. She's been a case manager at Hampton Academy. She's worked in the district for 15 years and previous to that, Maureen worked in the Manchester School District. She holds a bachelor's degree from the University of New Hampshire and a master's degree from Riviera College. During her career, Maureen has worked in the after-school program, assisting students with their homework and class studies. In addition, Maureen has been the student council advisor for the academy student council and in the past helped with grade eight field trips and activities. In recognition of Maureen's teaching and in lieu of retirement gift, the district made a donation to the Hampton St. Vincent de Paul Society as requested by Maureen. Thank you, Maureen, for your service to the students and families in Hampton and best to you and your family and enjoy the newest grandchild coming and the ones you already have.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. The next retiree, Virginia Knudsen. Virginia is the reading specialist at Center School as well as the literacy specialist. She's worked in the district for 33 years. Virginia holds a BA from the University of Maine and a Masters of Education in Reading from the University of Arizona. Throughout her career, Virginia has been active in numerous school activities as well as district curriculum work in English Language Arts and Library Science. In recognition of Virginia's teaching and in lieu of a retirement gift, the district made a donation to Hampton St. Vincent de Paul Society as requested by Virginia. Thank you, Virginia, for your service to the students and families in Hampton and best to you and your family. Virginia Knudsen. And our third retiree, Andrea.
Our third retiree is Meg Corin, who I think might hold one of the closest records to the longest time teaching in our district. She has been a physical education teacher at Center School. She has worked in the district for 41 years. You must have started when you were about 10. Meg graduated from Skidmore College in New York. In addition, over the course of her career, Meg has stayed current in her field by attending classes and programs at UNH. During her time in the district, Meg has been an active member of the District Wellness Committee and served as the building wellness coordinator and insisted on in the development of the physical education curriculum. The district will at some point, I hope, be able to get your gift to you for your many years of service, Meg. And we just want to thank you for all of your years of service to the students and families in Hampton. And I want to wish you the best to you and your family and personally, I hope maybe sometime we can rekindle some ski slope time in the future.
Meg, did you want to share any thoughts?
You're unmuted, Meg. You need to unmute yourself. Hit the microphone first, Meg. So if you click down on the screen at the bottom, you'll see a hang-up bar of a camera and a microphone. You want to click on the microphone.
Looks like a flower.
I've never heard of it described as a flower. I love that. Well, I guess we don't have any sound with her.
All right. If she comes on, we'll go back to her.
There she is. She's on. I just want to say that I've had a wonderful 41 years and I have really enjoyed it. The community, the kids, it's just been absolutely wonderful. And I'm sad to be leaving, but on the other hand, it's a new step in my life to come. And I will be looking for ways to, you know, find some other employment and do something that I enjoy and maybe working with kids again. I'm just not sure. So thank you very much, all of you.
I bet 41 years ago, you didn't think you would be getting your retirement over the internet.
No, I didn't.
Actually, 41 years ago, there was no internet.
No, there wasn't. And really, there wasn't much internet when I got my master's degree, so that was even harder.
It's a whole new world. Thank you, Meg, for everything you've done. Okay, why don't we do it this way? For the board committee report, are there anything that any board member has for their Ginny, budget committee?
Budget committee is a very busy meeting lately. We were trying to decide if we're going to have to make some cuts in different aspects of the town and also what the school is looking for. Luckily Kathleen Murphy and Brian Warburton, Bill Lampini from SAU 21, and Jamie Sullivan from the town office have been meeting and coming up with ideas and they're all working from the same page together. So that's how we should move forward is together because if the tax dollars don't come in, then we're going to have to have some serious conversations. And that's where the budget committee.
Kathleen?
I just want to add that Frank has joined us on those discussions, so there'll be a nice connection to the school board as well as Lois. So, you know, we've all been on those discussions, so I think it will be very helpful as you move forward. Thank you.
Andrea, wellness, anything?
No, not that I'm aware of. I do have something, the rec department, we had a meeting last month and we have a meeting tomorrow, and they're still working on ways to hopefully and safely open up a small group, way of opening up summer camp. So I believe they're sending out information, but if people signed up for summer camp and they know that their kids aren't going to go, they are able to get their money back. And going forward into the future, I think we need to, again, when we can figure out a way to get schools open or however we do it, we do want to try to make sure that we take care of the seniors and make sure that they have a place where we can host them in a safe environment because they're really trying to, you know, I know that they're, we are at, you know, the group that's at risk, but our seniors are healthy and active and vibrant people and they really would like to get back, get back, you know, having social time together in a safe manner. We have another meeting tomorrow night.
Any questions for anyone? Okay. I have nothing from the School Boards Association. Frank, you have anything from the Learning Collaborative?
I'll let Kathleen speak to that, basically.
So a couple of things. They voted last, two weeks ago, for on a budget, but they're in a dilemma, just like everyone else. They literally voted on three different budgets because whichever the scenario is in the fall, they will apply that budget. So that was passed. The good news is, is that they are leaving their current facility in Gawnick and moving to a school in Newton. They will be leasing the building from the Sanborn Regional School District. So they are very happy about that because they're back in, sort of in the center of the area where they receive a lot of students. So they're pretty happy about that. They actually did the move last week. So SLC will be much closer to the Southeasters than they were up in Gawnick. Other than that, I would say the staff is intact. They're, obviously, they're concerned about financial issues because they rely on tuition and transportation.
Ginny?
Last week, they had a meeting of all their bus drivers and monitors and have laid them off until September and maybe January. Depends on what their needs are, but they told everyone, their bus drivers and monitors, that they were laid off temporarily to go off, sign up for unemployment.
I hope they have them if they need them.
They, all of them are willing to come back, but they can't afford to pay them when they, everything's so uncertain.
Sure. Andrea and Pepper, policy? I know we have one policy to...
Yeah.
Andrea, you're muted.
We have one that we're going to look at, I believe, for a final vote tonight. Is that correct?
No, is that the suicide policy that's on your agenda?
Yeah.
No, that'll be a very, very, very first read.
Oh, first read, sorry.
Yeah, first read, yeah, no. That's recommendations from the suicide, suicide committee that we have. And so that's first steps and I think it should be just a simple read tonight, first read.
Was that in with a different policy before and we've separated it out?
I'm not sure how to answer that, Andrea. I don't know that.
Okay. I feel like I've seen that.
Well, I think we've talked about it before in our policy committee, but we never had the final written document.
Oh, all right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can't see if Pepper is here, but I'm assuming she is. Professional Development, Pepper?
She is here.
Okay. Pep, can she hear me? Pepper? Okay. All right, well, we'll move on. PTA, Ginny?
Nope, nothing new.
And curriculum, Andrea?
No, nothing at this point.
Let's move to reports from principals. Again, I can't tell if he's here, but Tim Lannan, Center School, anything for him?
Sure, Les, can you hear me okay?
I can. Can't see you, but I can hear you.
The June has been a really busy month. The first question before I forget is the number of kindergarten students that are registered. As of today, we have 78 registered for the fall. That's, that's pretty good, a good number, but we're at 78. It's been pretty stable this week. We're still thinking the week of June 15th for our full online registration, so I'm going to be getting that information out to folks. Right now, we're just at the pre-registration phase, but we will have an online registration up and going next week, so we're excited about that. June, as I mentioned, has been an extremely, extremely busy, busy month. We had an end of the year staff meeting and during that time, we had an opportunity to review everything we needed to do, but most importantly, we had a chance to say goodbye to Meg for the 41 years that were with us through a virtual celebration, which was, which was awesome. So we had an opportunity to do that. All summits are done, evaluations, goals meetings are complete. The staff had a chance to come in to finalize and pack up their room, which was great. Staff and parents had a chance this week to come in and drop off materials and that were borrowed from the school and pick up any final materials that they had in school. That went smoothly. Anybody that did not get a chance to come in, they can just call us here at the office and we'd make special, we're going to make some special arrangements for them to make sure they have an opportunity, so nobody will be shut out of that. Class lists are done and report cards are ready to go for tomorrow. Student transition meetings have gone on. They are just now completed where students, teachers had a chance to talk about student concerns. Grade levels this week have been really working hard on curriculum and curriculum maps and they met yesterday and they finalized a little bit today on those curriculum maps, looking at what was done, what wasn't done during trimester three and start developing plans. Tomorrow, they're going to meet in vertical teams with the receiving grade and the sending grades getting together to talk about those things. So we're excited about those vertical teamings that's going on tomorrow. And then even in the afternoon, they're going to reconvene again to take the information that's been gathered over the past two days and tomorrow's vertical teaming to start really developing a really strong action plan for coming to school in multiple scenarios. As you know, the task force has been working really hard and we're going to talk a little bit about that a little later, a little update on the task force, but multiple center staff members are on multiple areas of the task force. So we're getting some nice representation out of Center School, so we're going to be wrapping up that task force, those subcommittee meetings within the next week or so. Where as far as staffing for next year, we're just about complete. We still have that one final position, the critical need position. So I'm hoping that you could eventually make a move on that to allow us, whether we come back in any form or fashion, to have a tier-two support for data and for instruction is extremely critical at Center School. And so that is the last position that I'm anxious to get, to get some movement on. So, and the final thing is, I would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to thank Kathleen and to thank her for all that she has done for us and in the community over the past nine or 10 years. It's, it's just been remarkable. And as we're moving on and we continue to stay in a positive fashion, her leadership is going to be sorely missed and I want to thank her. I also want to thank Jess and Janine for all their leadership support and guidance over the years at Center School. And I also want to take a moment to recognize Michelle Witt as well for all her leadership and support at Center School. We're going to be losing some valuable people at, in Hampton and I want to wish them all the best of luck in their future endeavors. They're going to have great success in their new careers, new jobs. And I want to thank everybody for their continued support. We're ready to roll. No matter what happens, we're going to be ready to roll at Center School, so we're excited. And selfishly, we're looking forward to the summer. It's been a little stressful. It's been a little stressful. So that's it. Any questions for Mr. Lannan? Yes, Ginny?
Tim, what is the role of the unified arts, art, music, art, music, I'm trying to think, gym during this remote learning?
Yep. They had, they had Integrated Arts had a Google Classroom set up and they created lessons and they had, they were instructional components as well as the teachers. So their lessons were created just as, just as the classroom teachers were and students had an opportunity to go to the Integrated Arts page on the Google Classroom and participate in those activities. So they were very valuable.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Tim? Okay. Lois?
Okay. Well, I try not to be redundant. Thanks, Tim. I think you did a, you did a great job with an overview and I appreciate that. So obviously, again, it's a very busy time of year and what we tried to do is replicate many of those events that would have happened in person in a virtual experience. So we did do a two-three information night that we actually did virtually and that was sent out to those incoming third graders. We also did a five-six farewell assembly virtually that was sent out to our fifth grade parents. We also had a final assembly on June 4th that was released to all of our students and families. As you know, we wanted to recognize those students that were moving up and moving on, so we did a two-three-five-six parade. We did a loop, so second grade went through Center's loop, then they came to Marsden's loop where they were welcomed with lots of signs. We also did that with five-six. We had, again, they came through our loop and then went over to Hampton Academy. We want to special thanks to the Hampton PD for assisting us. Deputy Chief Dave Hobbs was very instrumental in doing the staging over at Winnicott High School, which allowed us to do our chance to just say goodbye, good luck, and welcome. So we appreciate that. And then, of course, we recognized our Read 100 students this year in that we had our students read over 52,000 books. We actually went around on that last day of school with a very small parade of Marsden staff and recognized those top readers, those being Amelia Siversky in third grade, Jonathan Mang in fourth grade, Hannah Edgar in fifth grade, and Lola Grody being the overall winner having read, believe it or not, 3,392 books. So just a fantastic literacy effort by everyone. And of course, special thanks to the Hampton PTA and the Hampton Rotary that helped to support this program. We really appreciate their support. As Tim said, tomorrow, report cards are being released and we're looking forward to having conversations tomorrow vertically and talking about curriculum. We've been doing that the last couple of days as we transition our students and we prepare for next year. So teachers have been busy with all of that and just trying to bring closure to the year in spite of what was going on. Nathan Sadler did a phenomenal job with our yearbook this year, so thank you, Nathan Sadler, for doing that. It was instrumental in bringing that to completion. It obviously plays a key role with all of our major assemblies and I can't, can't thank Nathan enough for all that he does for our school. And so special, special thanks to him and best of luck to those that are moving on. We appreciate the work that you've done to our district. We know that we're all in a better place because of your work. So obviously, special thanks to Jess Parsons, Janine, and Kathleen. Obviously, I appreciate all of your guidance, especially in these last few months as we are preparing this transition. So thank you to everyone. It's a bittersweet time of year. I think we all feel that way. A little sad that we're years coming to the end, although very excited to looking forward to what the future might hold. So, so thank you to everybody. Any questions for me?
Ginny?
Okay, Lois, during remote learning, we always think of the assistant principal as the disciplinarian of the school. And what did Mr. Sadler do during remote learning? He didn't, I don't know, maybe he did do discipline, maybe he did do, what did he do?
Oh, that's, you know, that's, that's a great question, Ginny. And I think what Nathan can tell you that he did is that Nathan, believe it or not, in addition to being a disciplinarian, he also is an instructional leader. So Nathan, in addition to addressing any of those Go Guardians that we received, and I'm sure Greg could probably tell you about those, addressing any Go Guardian concerns that we had, that we needed to follow up with, with students and families, obviously, he was very instrumental in all of that, but he also was, is an instructional leader. So Nathan and myself continued to oversee instruction in a virtual setting. Well, what does that mean? So I can tell you that we joined many class lessons. We also had morning meetings with kids. We also joined lunches with students and that was another way to check in on their social emotional learning. I can tell you that during this time, there were a number of social emotional needs that extended, believe it or not, beyond this, beyond the scope of what we had thought we were going to be dealing with, which required more involvement from the school's part as well as the involvement from our counseling and also from Janine. So you can, you can see that we were actually pretty busy. Nathan, also, in addition to supporting our students and our curriculum, he also is instrumental in, as I said, putting those virtual opportunities together for kids. He also came in on those days when we did distributions, overseeing them. In fact, many times, we didn't have student staff involved with those. We actually, it was me, Mr. Sadler, and Mrs. Antico. We also would call in our secretarial staff to assist with that. So we assisted with the distribution of materials at time. I'm sure Nathan could probably tell you many more things that he also did, but I can tell you right now, I think in some ways, we were busier than we ever were, only because in some cases, we were expected to be available 24/7 because your computer is here. And I'll give you an example, Ginny. So unfortunately, there was one night, and Greg, you might remember this, Kathleen, you might remember it because it sticks in my mind, I won't forget it, we got a Go Guardian alert, which was, which was concerning. And I'm not going to get into the, what we saw, but I can tell you right now, we were concerned about a student's well-being. So what did we do? Well, it started with Greg and Greg having a conversation with Kathleen, Kathleen and I having a conversation. This was at nine o'clock at night. He also, what happened then was I had a conversation with Nathan. Nathan responded by email to the parents, going in and actually doing all of the, if you will, dive into what the student was doing so we could be sending clear screenshots of what happened. So he was doing the electronic piece and screenshotting it to parents while I was calling parents at nine o'clock at night. That's just one of the things he did. Nathan is also very technologically savvy. So he was a great resource to staff as they were moving from this brick and mortar learning to remote learning. And so Nathan was one of those people that staff would call and he would help students, staff, families to troubleshoot if people had questions about how do you do this or how do you do that. Nathan was one, again, he was another go-to guy that people could count on to assist with that remote learning platform. So he was, Nathan, what, I don't want to take away your voice, is there something I, I left out? Please jump in.
No, just the regular end of the year stuff, placement meetings, you know, meetings with parents about retention and other, you know, things that came up along those lines as we're talking about transition. But generally, all the things we do at this time start developing schedules, preparing for the end of the school year, the culminating activities, you know, overseeing staff, meeting with kids, just, you know, and there still is, I don't want to say as much, but quite a few disciplinary things we do have to deal with. But, you know, I think my role is a lot more expanded than that in the terms of what I assist with and, and what I help with around the building and with student staff and families. So, you know, I feel pretty confident that, that our staff did a phenomenal job transitioning to this. And I think, you know, as Lois started to make her transition into her next role, you know, we've been doing things along those lines too in preparation for what the fall is going to look like. But it's been a very busy time of year and as Lois said, you know, instead of being around the building and interacting with people, it's a lot more of, of virtual meetings and being on your screen and being on your computer. And it does, it takes more time certainly than, than being in school with kids and teachers face to face.
And I can attest, Nathan, that the discussion that Lois referenced, we were on till 10:30 at night conversing about the issue. So there were many times that we had to have those sort of conversations and they don't always happen between eight and four. So it was nice to see that he was available to have some conversation that late in the evening.
Jenny, I hope that, I hope that gives you a little insight into it. What we take for granted is that when you're in a brick and mortar situation, you walk down the hallway, right? And you can, you can meet, you can, you can have those conversations, right? And they happen very fluidly, very naturally. Well, in this situation, right, where we're remote, the conversations take a lot longer and it's a little bit more delicate. So I think that we were, we were, we availed ourselves as we were needed. And I can tell you, in some cases, we were needed more than we were ever needed. So.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Lois. Any other questions for Lois? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. O'Conner?
Hi, everybody. Happy June. Again, I don't want to be redundant, but again, the transition meetings, the placement meetings, the curriculum meetings are all going on this week. We did our handout, our collection and handout last week for the eighth graders last, was a, went, their last day was Wednesday and we did a virtual final assembly for them and it's pretty well received. The class of 2020, a great bunch of kids. I would keep these kids for another year and I feel that we all got cheated out of our last six months together. But we're going to ask the kids to come back one more time. We got a generous donation from Geskis Photography. They've made wooden plaques for all the students that have been individualized and so those are due to, do be passed out next week, so we're going to ask them to come back. But again, busy time of the year for all of us. Yesterday, there was quite a few staff in the building. We're, we're in the building, we're wearing our masks, we're, we're doing the social distancing. But we had an impromptu meeting at the Bell yesterday morning and the staff gave Mrs. DeLuca a memento. And the staff gave Mrs. DeLuca a memento. And she rang the bell, so symbolically rang out her career. So congratulations to Mrs. DeLuca and to the other retirees. Questions for me?
Anyone have any questions for Dave? Okay. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think I saw Jessica Parsons. Jess?
Good evening, everyone. How are you tonight? Good. So Student Services has been just as busy as everyone else. I think a majority of the work we've been kind of working through is planning for extended school year or summer services or summer programming for kids. And so it looks, it's going to look a lot different than previous years. And planning for that has been a little bit more intensive than usual. And so we are, we do have plans for our remote special education program in place. Communication has gone out to families. We have had an amazing response to the amount of students who will be participating in remote learning. I have to tell you, there is a very small percentage who have, who will not be participating. And every year, we have a small percentage who don't participate for whatever reason. But I can tell you that because of the work that our Student Services team has done over the last three months, I truly believe it's a testament to their hard work to how many kids are going to be participating in our summer program because our remote learning and the way we provided services and the way the staff provided services was accessible for students that many families want to continue on with those services into the summer and into our summer programming. So I can't say enough good things about the staff over the last three months and how that has helped to make sure that kiddos are going to participate in ESY for summer. We have almost had all of the students respond who have been recommended for ESY. And like I said, it's a very small percentage who won't be participating. In addition to that, I've been working with the Title I team. And we have also planned remote services for Title I programming for students. So there will be many students who will have access to Title I programming remotely over the summer as well. And so many of our students who are at risk or have high needs continue in remote learning throughout the summer so that there is no, hopefully, disconnect in services during the summertime. We are working on a few small case-by-case situations for kiddos who have significant medical needs, bringing in some contracted providers, not any of our own staff, but contracted providers that already work in clinics with kids to meet some of their more significant medical needs. And so we do have a couple of in-person services that will be happening, provided by contracted providers who will follow their own safety protocols that will be vetted by, that have started to be vetted by myself, Kathleen, and Dr. Costa as well. So I feel very strongly about the summer programming we're offering for the Hampton students. And I'm very proud of the work that our staff has done to ensure that we can provide these services for kids. Any questions about summer programming?
No.
Great. I've also been working with our out-of-district programs where we have kids in several different out-of-district programs across the state and across Maine and Massachusetts. Slowly, as these programs are starting to open back up, I'm communicating with transportation companies around their safety protocols to see if, to see what those may be and talking with parents about comfortability of children accessing in-person services in those programs and through transportation with those safety protocols that are in place. And so many of our out-of-district students will start to transition back into their programs either into June and July or into the August months. But the hope is that many of these more significant needs kids will start to get more in-person services as more things open up in the next few months. So we're continuing to work with them. And then I just, again, want to give a big shout out to all of the case managers and related service providers for their amazing work over the last three months. In addition, they've been really busy the last couple of days working on documentation. The one of the things that the state recommended for us was communication with families was key. And all of our case managers did that. But with that, you have to document all of the communication that took place around providing services, how services were provided, frequency, time, so that we can make sure those are documented so that we have data when we go back to meet with families in the fall regarding potential compensatory education services. And that just means services that we might have to additionally add on for kids that they weren't able to access during remote learning. So our staff is working really hard to make sure all that documentation is in files and ready to go for the beginning of the school year. And yes, thanks, Bridget, I got it on my list. And then I've been working, I met with Dr. DeSilva Napton a couple of weeks ago. She'll be the one taking over for me come July 1st. So we had our first transition meeting. And I'm also working with Kathleen and Lois to ensure that all of the things that need to be covered before I leave are set to go as part of the transition process. And I have a working document as a transition plan, ready to go for all of those things. And then last but not least, I just want to take a moment to thank all of the staff throughout the district for their hard work and dedication to support the students of Hampton, all students of Hampton, not just ones that access Student Services. It has been an absolute honor to work in the community in which I live in. And I'm very thankful for the last four years and the opportunity to work with all of you. So I just want to thank you for that. I want to take a moment to thank Kathleen for her leadership and her mentorship. It has been amazing and really has helped guide me as well as my work with all of the principals and my work with Janine. And I also want to take a moment to thank the board for their support in ensuring that all kiddos get what they need regardless of who they are and where they come from. So thank you. Any questions? Okay, Jenny, hold your hand.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see you, Jenny. Jenny, any questions?
Thank you, Jess. Thank you. Thank you for your hours. Thank you for your kids. Thank you for everything you've done for SAU 90. We appreciate it. We apologize for any hard times that you've had, but we appreciate all the things you've done. Thank you very much.
Very welcome, Jenny. It's been my pleasure.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Janine, anything? Janine Richards, anything? I don't know if she can hear me.
Sorry, I thought you said Jenny.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I, just like Jessica, I've really been trying to wrap up some loose ends and transition. A lot of my time has been spent transitioning with the counselors. We had our last distribution with Hobbs House last night. We had about 20 families show up and a few more are coming to Hobbs House over the next few days to get distribution items, to get them through the summer. I took it as an opportunity to say, you know, a heartfelt goodbye to families. I've been with some of them for eight years. So it was a really emotional night for me. And, you know, they were thankful for all the programming that Hampton offers. I assured them that I would try to transition with whoever takes my place, hoping to kind of give them, give the new person as much information about the families and the programming that already exists so that there's no gap in services. And the families seem pretty happy about that. So I have tried to the best of my ability and a lot of families have kind of come up with very vague plans or no responses at all about housing. I know that the beach has been a little different this year given that they can't do the summer rentals at the same capacity that they have in the past. However, landlords are hopeful that they can rent to people at a higher rate. So they are keeping with the leases for winter rentals. So families are being expected to leave if they haven't already. Come probably June 15th, I think, is the latest cutoff that I've seen. So some families have gone camping and then have very adequate campers with Wi-Fi and all of that. And then we'll come back to the same rental next year. So I am trying to be organized and leave as much information for the new social worker as possible so McKinney-vento determinations are easier to make based on a lot of information. I also have reached out to all of the other liaisons of shared districts to let them know that I'm leaving and what determinations have been made for families that are still considered homeless and will be likely to be homeless come September, regardless of whether we come back to the building or not. With that comes transportation and how we will get kiddos to school if we need specialized transportation for, for example, like kids that are in area shelters and things like that, that they absolutely need transportation, but it might look different given health guidelines and such. So I think I'm just kind of going through eight years' worth of Google Docs to share with counselors and administrators and make sure that you guys have everything that you need when I go. And, you know, I want to echo what everyone said. It's been a really good eight years. And I'm not going to keep talking because I'm going to get emotional. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Janine. Any questions for Janine? Jenny?
Janine, thank you. I won't say too much, but thank you. Thank you for all you've done for this district. Thank you for all the baloney you had to put up with sometimes. But thank you from the bottom of my heart. And the best thing is, I have five kids from Seabrook, so you guys are very.
I look forward to it.
Okay. Superintendent's report. Kathleen?
Thank you, Les. The first thing.
Anything for me before you go, Les?
We forgot about Greg.
That's okay.
Because you go earlier, I would.
I don't have much. I just want to let you and the town know that we are aware that the sign has been broken at the academy. They're working on fixing it. Last I'd spoken to Dave, they were coming back out. They came out and I think they got it working. And then as soon as they left, it stopped working again. So I don't think they quite fixed it the way they should. So the usual sign, I'm sorry, Dave?
That's correct. They did fix it. And then they gave me a picture of it working. And then after they left, it was out again. So they've been contacted to come out again.
So we're working on that. So one side of the sign is currently dead, but we're working to get that back online. We have a switch that is dead in one of the schools. And we have another one on order. We actually have two on order because now with grant money coming in for the buildings, we need additional switches. So we have two new switches coming in that have been placed on order to connect new cameras and other such security devices in the district and to get our access points back online at the, at Marsden. Dave has worked his magic and moved some things around. So it works for now as teachers are in there, but not in the ideal situation. We have a temporary switch in place. So we will get all that back into place. But we've also been talking a lot with teachers and staff and administration about Chromebooks coming back to the school and making sure that things are ready for us to go as of tomorrow. I've been heading back into the office except for Friday and today because of some work being done in my office. But Wednesday, back in full time as we now start to hit the Chromebooks full speed to try and get those ready and moved up to the appropriate grades for students for next year. We have 350 of them about that will come offline at the end of lease that we're going to purchase. I also have contacted with Wally Computers, our vendor, who has 350 replacements sitting in storage because as I heard in a listserv going around amongst tech directors just yesterday, some of them are being quoted that Chromebooks won't be available till December. So the move we made early was a smart one to give me the okay to purchase those and put them aside so that they're available for us. And as soon as we hit the new budget cycle, we'll be able to get those in district and get those into the grades as new replacements and take the 350, buy those out of lease for a mere like $15 apiece and have those as extras if we do go back to some form of remote next year. We'll have plenty of extra to move around and to offset the balance that we're missing in pre-K to, to make them one-to-one. So that will get us this summer, one-to-one district-wide kindergarten through grade eight. And then anything else that we have, I'll have a discussion with you people at a later point about the possibility of if we have extra, do we sell them back to company or offer them out to people in town? I've had some people asking if we could do that sort of thing in the future, is sell things coming off of lease to them? So that might be something we want to have as a discussion later on. We also need to start to have a discussion sometime before the next school year in regards to policy or just your feeling in regards to recording meetings. So as we talk about in a few minutes, I'm sure as we go into, you know, next year and planning, regardless of what we do, they're seeing more and more of a need for lessons to be recorded. So we need to have discussions around that as well. So I've been talking with staff in regards to some of those issues as we try to plan for next year. Other than that, any questions for me?
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to, a point of order, that we have a donation for $500 from the Hampton Elementary PTA that was donated to Center School. And I'd ask that you accept that donation.
Can I get a motion from someone?
A motion. I'll make a motion.
Moved, Pepper? Seconded?
I'll second it.
Seconded, Frank? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, why don't we put our hands up? I can see you all now. So put your hands up if you're in a, there you go. Okay. Five to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick update on remote learning. Just finished the year out. Our students finished, as you all know, on the 4th of June, Thursday. Our teachers will be completing their work on Wednesday, the 10th. All the materials, as all of the principals, I don't want to repeat it, but the materials have been returned and both the Chromebooks and hardware as well as instructional materials. So I appreciate the parents coming by and dropping that off. That was huge for us and a big help in order to collect those things. You know, you just can't say enough about what happened over the last 12 weeks. I mean, that didn't happen just because it happened and we had Chromebooks, right? It happened because we had a staff that was committed to the kids and to the families. And we had teachers and paraprofessionals who really rose to the occasion and I'm grateful. But so many other components, I mean, our clerks and secretaries working in their offices, taking all the phone calls, trying to keep things running there, as well as food service, ensuring that we got food and meals out to well over 100, and I think it ended up around 110 students every day getting a lunch, a breakfast and lunch, I should say. And so the other partner in that work was our bus company in providing a way to get that, the materials, not only their learning materials, but their food every day to them via the bus company. So again, a lot of people doing a lot of work. And of course, our principals making sure and our directors making sure that all of the pieces were working and troubleshooting where they needed some support. So again, kudos to everyone. I think they did a great job. We are going to hear more tonight about return to school. So I'll have a few brief remarks about that before we have a formal presentation to you. So I'll leave that till later. Eighth grade trip to Washington, DC is on your agenda. It's been very painstakingly slow. I have talked to the lawyer again. I indicated the direction that you took as a board in terms of the reimbursements to our families. David O'Connor and his team have crafted a very good letter to the parents informing them about next steps. But quite frankly, we're a bit frustrated over this. And we have advised the parents and we've given them a sample letter to write letters to the Attorney General's Office and to put in a formal complaint against the tour company. We've waited. We were promised money at the end of May, beginning of June. And here it is today, June 9th, and we still haven't received a single dime from this company. So I think it's time that we step up our game and that we have our parents who are very willing to help us with that process. So I know that I reviewed the letter from Dave and his team last night. I sent some ideas about it. I know that Judith Clark also did some minor edits to it. So I'm going to assume that that letter will be out within the day or so with some. that that letter will be out within the day or so with some, some advice to parents as we move forward together to try to address that issue. Again, I, I know that you know that we have sent over $77,000 to the, to the company, to the tour company and, and so I expect that we need to, the parents need to get the refunds that they so richly deserve. So I'll leave it at that. I hope to keep you updated on it as, as we make progress in this. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Frank has a question.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the trip now. How much money do we still have that has not been contributed? Is that the $9,435?
Yes, yes.
And did, did we not also have that $7,500 that the board was going to bring forward? Has that been given to them?
No, that, that, that is part of the $9,435, Frank.
Okay, that's part of that.
Yeah.
All right. So and how many families are involved in this?
There were 128 students, but there, David has, it's quite a year. David has six sets of twins in the eighth grade. So you can do the math, so you know, 116 families were involved in 12 kids that were twins, so.
All right. Well, I'm just looking at if we have this $9,400 available, okay, couldn't we just arbitrarily, you know, give some of that towards the parents? You know, maybe 50, 60, $80 until the other piece is rectified?
Well, I haven't, I would like to discuss that with, with David and his team. And the reason for that, Frank, is, is that I don't know what, what, how that money has been designated. So yeah, let me talk to them about it. I, I want to see what they're thinking on that. I'm still hopeful that we're going to get money. I know that we are, we have about, they've, they've committed some money to us, but it was not enough to cover the total and that's what you wanted. And so I know that in our negotiations, we're about halfway where we want to be. So there is additional money, Frank. It isn't like, but, but I haven't seen a dime yet, so I'm, I'm, you know, until you see it, the check in your hand, you really can't commit to the families.
No, okay.
All right. I'll keep you posted.
Yeah. What have we learned from this experience? What have we learned going forward on this experience?
Well, I think that the committee will tell you that they would relook at the company that they chose, although they showed a great faith in the initial stages of the planning for this trip. They were very responsive to Hampton Academy staff and, and the needs. I think that when the calamity occurred, COVID-19, because of being a small, a mom-and-pop operation, if you will, not like a big, large travel company, they did not have the resources to be able to support 128 youngsters in terms of responding to their, the refund. I think the other thing is, is that they're going to have to look at, and it's going to be an expense for the trip, Janine, but I think, and I, and I hope David will jump in here, but I think they would rethink the whole piece about insurance and perhaps really make sure that both levels of insurance are there. We had parents that, families that took the first level of insurance, but it didn't cover a pandemic. So there was a second offer on insurance that covered the pandemic, but as far as we know, we only know of one family that bought that insurance. So I think both the coordinators of the trip agreed that that would be something that they would, they would make it mandatory so that we don't ever find ourselves in this situation again.
Okay.
David, I, I didn't want to speak for you, but does that pretty much summarize what we've talked about?
Absolutely. You know, it, it was unfortunate that, that, that this company, which I think they're, they're very reasonable people, but they were so small, they, I think that they, they basically functioned from trip to trip. And I, I do believe we're going to get money back from them. I, I think that we are prepared. In fact, I want to give Judith credit for drafting that letter. So we're going to be sending a letter to parents tomorrow. It'll tell them how to get in touch with the Attorney General. And I think if we do that en masse, and I, if there's anybody in the community who would like to, a copy of this letter, I would be glad to send that to them as well so that we can get the Attorney General behind us. Thank you.
Anything else in your report, Kathleen?
No, I think for the most part, the, the work that this month has really been around the roadmap to return to school. So I'm going to, I'll leave my report unless someone has a question.
Did anybody else have a question for the superintendent? Okay, so if I may, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Superintendent Murphy for her nine years of service to our community. Through her leadership, we've been able to continue to offer an unmatched delivery of content and curriculum to our students. Her expertise, organization, and thoroughness has enabled us to grow immeasurably and helped bring to fruition a renovation project that was long overdue. We wish her all the best in her new endeavor and again, thank her for the many ways she's made our school system a 21st century model for others to emulate. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Janine? I'm sorry, Janine?
She's on mute. Janine, you're on mute.
Thank you, Kathleen Murphy. You have been the founding person, Superintendent of SAU 90. You worked tirelessly to make SAU 90 the best possible district it could ever be. You led the district with grace and dignity and most of all with community. You had to get everybody in the community involved in whatever you were doing and you went out and you met everybody. You've been the best advocate for SAU 90 that you could have ever been. Your hard work has made the difference in the academy project where you and Nathan ate, slept, drank, everything to Hampton Academy for three years, and we thank you for that dedication. Your legacy is not going to be Hampton Academy. Your legacy is going to be all the future and present leaders in the state of New Hampshire education system that have been mentored by you. Hampton says, "Thank you."
We have, looks like 87 people here and I suspect that a lot of them are here for the next topic of discussion. I'm going to hold off on the finance just, just now and, and go to the next one. And Kathleen, can we talk about the district response to the COVID-19?
Well, I think we pretty much settled and got through the initial 12 or 13 weeks. So our work has really been, how do we move forward? Where, where, where do we go next? And so we began the journey on May 11th, actually, working on plans that we would call our roadmap to return. And we have been collaborating, as you know, and I've kept you up to date on that, we've been collaborating with 21 because we share families and that was really important that we do that. We know that we have four scenarios facing us as a, as a school district. One is where we turn to school with all the, the caveats of CDC and the New Hampshire's Health and Human Services as well as Department of Ed guidance. We also know that one of the other scenarios could be that we would continue in a remote learning environment. The third is what I would consider and what we call a, a rolling enrollment. In other words, we would bring the students in, but there could be an occasion because of a hotspot, an increase in the, in the virus that would cause us to return to remote learning. So we know that when we think about our planning, we have to think about that scenario. Maybe we're in and maybe we return to a remote learning. The fourth one is a hybrid model where you, and that has a variety of looks to it. It could be that you have, you have youngsters that are in for two days and out for three days, or you have grades K through five in and seven and eight and six, seven and eight on remote learning. There are, think about it as a hybrid. It would be a mix of, of different scenarios that, in order to accommodate the kids. You have to keep in mind, you really have to keep in mind, we anticipate students not returning because their parents are not ready to have them return, given all of the issues around COVID-19. Perhaps the youngster has some, is fragile in some medical way and would put them in harm's way if they return, or a member of the family has a medical issue that, you know, that they, they are concerned that an asymptomatic youngster could pass that on to a member of the family. So parents, we know, may not send, we, we have to anticipate that we may not see all of our children returning. We also have concerns that, that our staff, you have to think about your staff and are all of our staff members ready to come back? Or do they have situations where they have to be worried about a family member or themselves because they have a medical condition or they're fragile in some way? So we are thinking about those possibilities as we move forward. In doing so, we have had five subcommittees. You're going to hear from them in a couple of minutes. I'm trying to make my comments brief so you can really hear from them. We have a wellness committee, a committee for instruction, operations, facilities, and technology. And so each one of those had an assignment to using the four scenarios that I just mentioned, what would it look like and what would, what are the possibilities for returning for the fall, not whether we return or not return? So they will provide that for you. I do want to mention a couple of things though that I think are really important. On Monday, the 15th, we just set this up today, Lois and I did, on Monday, the 15th, at 10 o'clock, I'm going to ask for an all-staff meeting. Now, I can't, I can't go to the auditorium and I, I can't have, I can't be in the gym, but we will use, Greg tells me I can use the, the Google Meet and I will, I will address the staff on the 15th so that everybody understands the plans. And I also have set up with SAU 21 on the 16th at 6 o'clock, June 16th at 6 o'clock, a, a community forum so that our parents can hear the plans. I mean, I know there's quite a few parents on tonight and that's awesome, but you know, we want to try to reach out to more and advertise that we will present our plans. And again, remember, SAU 21 and 90 are really, we're kind of walking hand in hand in this. I feel pretty, pretty good about the plans that Bill has and he's pretty good about what we're doing. And by the way, Lois and I sit on his committee and he sits on our committee, so we have a nice crossover of information. So two dates that are important, March 15th, 10 o'clock, I'm going to ask for an all-staff meeting and I know that the responsibilities are done on Wednesday, but you know, trying to get everything together. And I wanted to present the information to you tonight before I went any further. And the second and very important meeting will be the March, the June 16th meeting at 6 o'clock for our community parents guardians. And I'll send out notices and we'll tweet it and whatever to get the information out. So without any further ado, Les, I think it would-
Yes, Kathleen?
Yep.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. But there's probably two questions that most parents have on their mind because I've gotten a lot of emails. Two questions. Number one, I think you've already answered, what's it going to look like, whether it's remote or a hybrid or whatever, because I am on that committee and I've been in on the discussions. But probably the most important one is when are they going to find out what we're going to do? And I'm going to let you answer that.
You know, I wished I had a crystal ball. Just think about what's happened nationally, okay? We have seen 20 states in the last week have a significant uptick in the number of viruses reported. They were on the downside of the virus and because of various activities that happened and opening up perhaps even too soon, maybe? I don't know. I'm not going to speculate that. But what's happened is they've had a significant uptick in the number of viruses. And so I wished I could say that we are going to be absolute, solid, ready to go on August 1st. I could have the week, next week, we could have an outbreak and all the plans change. But I will say that we'll, we'll at least have recommendations by, I, I see mid-July, we'll know where we stand mid-July. We are waiting for a guidance from the Department of Ed, but we had hoped to have their reports sooner, but I don't anticipate it coming in until probably the end of this month. So Les, I guess the best I can say is, and I think Lois will, will, would concur, that the best we can do is between mid-July and the 1st of August, have a plan. I mean, we know what we need to do if we bring them back. That's not the problem. The problem is, is it bringing them back or do we keep them still at home or is it a hybrid? But it's all going to depend on what they-
Thank you. Thank you. Frank?
Yeah. Just recently I found out that the governor, Governor Sununu, and he had a press conference today, is expecting a second wave to hit New Hampshire either late summer or early fall. Now, those are his words, not mine. So that's something to think about.
And, and that's our problem, Les. You know, when I try to say, I want to tell the parents, okay, this date, drop dead date, right? But I, I, I think that myself or, or Lois would, would, would not be able to say that and be comfortable, just based on what Frank just told you.
As a, as a board member, and I, I've received quite a few emails, and there, there's one side of the argument where there are parents that are saying, our kids cannot continue with remote learning. It, it's harmful to them. Kids aren't thriving, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand that. And there's the other side of the coin where parents want to ensure safety, they want to make sure, and how can we have safe schools? So I think as a board, where, where are aware of those schools of thought?
Well, I think you're going to hear from each committee tonight and you'll hear their preliminary recommendations to address exactly what you just said. All right? So Les, is it appropriate? Okay. Then I'd start with Jessica. She's the chair right now of the Wellness Committee. So Jess, you want to share your thoughts?
Absolutely. I mean, yeah. Good evening, everyone, again. I just want to take a moment to thank all of the committee members. We have a, a wide variety of, of people representing from each school as well as parents, PTA members, as well as a local physician in the area. So I feel very strongly about the team that we have, that have worked to make these recommendations. And again, these are recommendations we're making to you, which will then the Governance Committee tomorrow will kind of talk about in terms of whether or not we would move forward with implementing these as part of a plan. And I, I will let you know that a majority of what we're talking about here relates to all of those four options. So we didn't break out our, our recommendations per option. We felt very strongly about staff and student wellness and that the recommendations we're going to make, although they might look different on how you implement them, the recommendation itself would remain, would be the same regardless of what, what setting we come back in, in the fall. So I am going to read my notes, which are on the screen, so I won't be able to see you while I do this, so please speak up if there are questions as I- So please speak up if there are questions, um, as I, as I go through this. Um, so we have, we split our, our group, our subgroup up into, um, a sub-sub, two sub-subgroups, a student subgroup and a staff subgroup. So I'm going to cover the staff recommendations first for wellness. And please know that some of this may overlap with some of the other committees. But our, our, our task was to ensure student and staff wellness, um, upon return. Um, and so the first recommendation we ask you to consider is that the district will consider the creation of a district-wide mentorship program to be controlled by individual schools. And essentially, um, the purpose of that program would be connection. Um, the goal moving forward, um, towards making connections and making sure that every student in the school building has connection with a staff member and a group of peers on a regular basis. There's no agenda for this group meeting other than connecting, checking in and giving each other an outlet to talk. Um, and obviously this would be facilitated by staff. Um, and really the recommendation to this program would be building-based. And so there's some, uh, there's a lot of other details in terms of the recommendations that this, the committee makes that I, I think the governance committee can kind of go through. But really, we would like each school to create a mentorship program. And again, it, it would, it, um, this would go across all four settings. So whether we're remote or whether we're in person, um, we want to create mentorship programs with small groups of students and staff. There's enough staff across the district to break up into smaller groups and give students an outlet to just connect as we know that there has been a lack of connection, um, over the last, um, several months due to COVID. Um, so that would be, um, that would be recommendation number one on the student side. Um, the second recommendation is the purpose of some open-air classrooms or some open-air, um, uh, I guess, classes. And so the provision of, of curriculum-based education that integrates the arts, um, in social emotional learning, um, in the outdoors. And so if we can provide the opportunity, um, for students to, to be outside as much as possible and maybe rethink some of the way we, um, essentially deliver our curriculum and instruction. And if we, I know New England can be difficult in the fall. However, there are, there are quite, there's quite a bit of an opportunity to get outside. Um, and so if we can start to create some of the instructional spaces in the outdoor setting, um, the goal is to provide healthy spaces to allow, um, for, for kids to, um, access their instruction. But also, um, as a way to play and connect as well. So the, the thought of allowing some instruction or more instruction to take place in open-air classrooms. There's many curriculums and, 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 um, there's some, some, uh, agencies out there that can support us in, in looking into programs. Um, you know, someone suggested looking at the Timbernook program. Um, and so again, this would just be supplemental and to support, um, what we're, what we already do. But if we can get, um, access to some open-air, um, instruction, that is something that we think will be really helpful for, for students going back in the, in the fall. The last student recommendation, and again, we're really just focused more on kind of the wellness side of this, um, is the, is, um, to consider, um, is to consider some, uh, some parent support and social emotional training for parents. Um, so we'd like to coordinate, um, virtual or, uh, it could be in-school or at-home learning, um, using what, what we would like to call common, um, social emotional learning language. And we would work really closely with the social emotional learning committee to develop that language and be able to, um, hopefully provide, um, some, some supports to parents around the language we use, how we use it and the importance of using that language. And that allow parents to be empowered in the social emotional development of their children. Um, and we have many, um, we have many resources within the, the district that we can use to support this. But we think it's really important regardless of whatever capacity we come back, that we need to also provide some parent support and, um, social emotional training so that we can all be in this together, um, in supporting our students' social emotional wellbeing. Um, so those would be the student recommendations. Um, we also know that in order to ensure that our step, that our students, um, feel safe and connected in the classroom, again, whatever setting that may be, that our teachers need to feel safe and connected as well. And so really that has to be the foundation of some of the work that we do to ensure the students are getting what they need. Um, and so we'd like the district to consider sending out an optional and anonymous self-assessment tool to all staff, all staff, not just, not just instructional staff, but all staff. Because we know that the food service workers and our facility workers, as well as our, our, the staff that work in the front offices are all important to the work that we do. We all know that they've been affected by this. And so we want, would like to send out a self-assessment tool to all staff, to assess, um, compassion, satisfaction and fatigue levels across the district. Um, there's research-based tools out there that, um, are used across the country, um, to, to measure, um, these levels, um, and are well-respected. Um, and so the goal in doing this with a purpose would be to provide staff a tool to reflect on their own emotional wellness after experiencing and working through an extremely stressful event, which, which, which is considered, which COVID-19 is considered. Um, and we've researched some, some, uh, self-assessment tools and we've selected one, which is the professional quality of life scale, um, that we would like to, um, offer to staff to be able to take, help, um, reflect. Um, and then the second piece of that would be to send up a follow, some follow-up questions after staff take that, again, anonymous and optional. But basically just allowing them an opportunity to answer some questions as well as give us some feedback. Um, so that we can, uh, can look to, um, provide recommendations for support for staff and, and with their input. We really, really want to get staff across the district input. And then based on that input, the last recommendation we would like to, um, to put out there is to create, um, some focus groups, um, again, across all staff within our, our SAU, um, to give them an opportunity to participate in open discuss, discuss questions regarding wellness, um, that, that will help make final recommendations to, um, the governance committee as well as each school to what staff members, um, may need upon our return. Um, so our goal is really around the staff pieces to collect data from these staff specifically in a variety of ways so that we can make really directed recommendations based on what teachers are asking and what their needs are. Um, that is it for the, from the wellness side. And I'm happy to take questions or clarify the best I can. Okay.
Kathleen, the next group?
Yeah, so our, our next group, uh, in, in the, um, process will be the instruction committee. And that Tim, Tim Lannan and Michelle Witt, uh, co-chaired that one.
Thank you and welcome. Uh, Michelle, why don't you get started for us?
Okay. Um, so the instruction committee, um, this was quite a, um, big task for us. We don't have, um, quite explicit recommendations as the wellness committee did. As you can imagine, it's a lot to encompass. Um, but we are starting to, um, come together with, um, bigger ideas. But I will get, share with you where we're at at the current, um, moment. So we're looking at instruction in all of the scenarios that Kathleen talked about. Um, most specifically, we've looked at assessment. And, uh, we've put together a plan for, um, multiple forms of assessing students, um, to understand, um, their possible loss over the last trimester and over the summer. Um, and sort of identify their needs in order, um, to meet those academic needs, um, next year. This includes assessments and SEL and academics. We have a student survey that we use if we're face-to-face. And we're sort of working on some ideas for what that would look like if we go remote. Um, and of course, we have, um, academic assessments that we would utilize, um, in both settings. And we've talked about how if we are continuing with remote learning, um, some of those assessments would have to look a little bit differently due to the nature of remote learning. Um, we're also considering methods for grading and reporting progress to parents and what that will look like. Um, because if it's not, if, even if it's hybrid or remote, it's, we know it's going to be a little bit different and the instruction is going to be a little bit different there. So we're considering different ideas for that. Um, we're also looking at all the intervention programs and services that are available to students when we return to school. And we're looking at all the settings that we could possibly have and what, and how we can provide the best supports for those students. Um, we're looking at, we're sort of looking at what we've learned from remote learning so far. And we're looking at what we can keep and what we need to improve on, um, and what areas we need to, um, need help with. Um, we have done surveys with teachers and formal surveys, looking at what technology worked and what technology didn't work. And what digital and online tools, um, will be the most effective in order, we sort of, everyone was sort of using a lot of different tools when we started this because nobody knew what to expect. And we kind of feel like we need to narrow that down and, um, identify specific tools that we can use. And it would also be physically more responsible because we would only be, um, paying for specific, um, online, um, tools or digital tools instead of all the stuff that was free this ti- this trimester is not going to be free next year, most likely. Um, we looked at how we can utilize staff differently to meet the varying needs of students. And we've talked at different scenarios of maybe, you know, how we can utilize paraprofessionals so that we can provide more small group one-on-one instruction for students to support the learning that's going on in tier one. And maybe using integrated arts teachers and helping with this progress and also using them to integrate into the classroom, um, their discipline. Um, and we've started looking at what a daily schedule might look like. Um, and, and a remote setting or in a hybrid setting or face-to-face with social distancing guidelines. And, um, um, kind of deciding what we need to make instruction successful in all those settings. Um, we're also looking at ways to strengthen the instruction in the curriculum to meet the needs of all of our students. Uh, we've started doing this now, um, by what I had mentioned earlier, that teachers have been meaning to identify the, um, the standards and the content that they didn't get to go in as depth as they normally would have had they been in the classroom this, um, trimester. And they're relaying that information to the next year's teachers. And they're currently working on where to start next year. That's sort of what they'll be doing tomorrow. And also identifying what standards are essential because whatever setting, time is going to be an issue. And so we have to really identify those essential standards that we definitely need to cover. And maybe some of the other ones that we don't need to go as in-depth with. Um, we are looking at, um, how we can educate parents on how to best support, um, their students at home. How much is too much and what kinds of things they can do to support their learning? And we've talked about developing some sort of an education program for parents. Um, and we're also right now working on what kind of instruction, instruction for all scenarios. Is recorded lessons better than live lessons? And what ratio should there be? And how much live instruction time should teachers be required to teach? Um, and we're also talking about possibly setting up a system to pick up materials and return materials on a consistent basis. Because there's a lot of concern about too much screen time for students. And if there was some sort of a system where every, say, every two weeks, parents drop off and pick up, that would allow, um, teachers' time to get better assessment of what's happening in the classroom. We will allow the teacher to give students more non-screen time activities. Um, so that like important component if we are going back in a hybrid model or some sort of face-to-face that's with, um, social distancing. We've also, we've surveyed staff and talked about professional development and what needs teachers have if we have to continue in any of these settings. Um, and we know that we're going to need, teachers are going to need time to collaborate and to engage in intentional planning, um, and pacing. And this has to be collaborative because we have to make sure that all students are receiving the same quality education. And we have to make sure that we are ready to go no matter, um, what happens. If we have to return, if we go back and we have rolling closures, we have to be, be prepared for that. And we do know one thing is that no matter what happens, technology is the backbone of our instruction, no matter what, no matter what scenario we're in. Because, um, we have to be ready to go remote anytime, even if we are face-to-face. Um, our plans for professional development, we, um, are recommending that they include, um, COVID-19 trauma. Um, and, um, professional development around equity issues and implicit bias and cultural responsive teaching. We also, teachers would like some PD around social emotional learning and, um, PD around technology and the use of digital and online learning tools. And PD on safety-related, uh, safety-related training due to coronavirus. And then another component that we all feel is very, um, important is that we need to provide professional development for parents. And this should take place before the school year starts to train parents on how to use the technology platforms and the tools. And to train them on the expectations for their student supports. And, um, also developing some sort of ongoing training for parents or some sort of place where parents can go to get information at any time during the day. So that's sort of sums it up where we're at right now. Does anybody have any questions or Tim, do you want to add anything?
No, thank you, Michelle. As, as you always do, you gave a very thorough, brief explanation of what we have been doing. As you can, as you can imagine, everyone, that, uh, instruction has many tentacles and it's overlapping in many areas. So that term recommendation versus where we are on updates is very, um, is not as clear for us right now. We realize that by next week, we need to have a little bit more specific in that area, but we're working on that. We're a work in progress. We're meeting again Thursday. But, uh, we have a lot of things we're working on. So we're looking for any feedback or any information that you would like us to, to work on as well. So thank you, Michelle. Nathan and Dave, if you have anything you want to add? Hearing none?
I guess not. Okay, Kathleen?
Kathleen, you're on mute. Kathleen, you're on mute.
Um, I forgot, yeah. Um, the next area that we looked at was operations, uh, kind of a all-inclusive, uh, category. And Lois is going to make a presentation about the work that that, and recommendations that that committee has for you tonight. I think Lois is there, Lois?
I am. Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Kathleen. Yeah, I am. Um, so our, our group actually has a number of tentacles, I guess I would say. So I'm going to just kind of lead you through, through each of them. So I'm going to start a little bit with rec department. And obviously Renee served on our, um, committee. And it was great to have him on there because we talked with him specifically about what they're planning to do this summer and that they are looking to do a pilot with 24 kids. They'd be in groups of eight. It would be a seven-week summer session. Um, obviously they're going to follow all CDC, PPE guidelines, as well as there's going to be Primex training. They're looking at the mental health of the students. So just an opportunity for them to have that, um, time this summer to get kids outside and involved in camps. Again, small, 24 kids. Also want to let you know that HYA is also looking at baseball coming up very shortly, if they haven't already. Again, they're going to offer it free this year. There is a, there are strict regulations that they're following, but we are getting kids outside and playing, playing baseball. We can also let you know that we've been in contact with Jake Sidney from the YMCA Schools Out program and talking to him about what active school programs would look like as well as what summer camp looks like this year. Um, he walked us through different scenarios with that. Summer school, as we know, it's primarily remote for the most part, with the exception of a few students that will receive speech and language and physical therapy that will be provided. This will be done at the community room at Hampton Academy. This was selected because it's a real self-contained space that allows the students to get the services that they need, um, under an outside provider. So that's also going to happen. We also work with Stacy Morris from her student. And she shared with us that obviously they're going to follow all of the guidelines. They're waiting to see, receive direction, but at this time, they're ready to respond. Their drivers are trained. They are following all CDC and state rules. They're going to work together with us, the school, to develop routes. We are also looking at determining what ridership would look like in the fall. This might involve surveying parents to get real numbers. So that would happen, obviously, before the fall. We also spoke, um, with her about should we be remote? What does that mean? You know, would we have the revenues to support the first student drivers this year? That's still in a conversation. That came up as well today. We, we met with Jim Doherty and he spoke with us about athletics. We know that students who have not been participating in athletics are, are crazed. As he, the word he used, crazed to get out there and to get back on the field and to be back involved with sports. He anticipates a massive response. Um, last year, there were 134 students that were involved with cross-country. He anticipates that he would see big numbers again this year. They're looking at the season. They're thinking about the games and the events. They're thinking about the supplies. And he says at this time, everything is in standby mode. If we get clearance, they're open to play. That might look like we'd be in groups of 10. There'd be tryouts, there'd be practice. They'd cancel if they had to, but they want to have those teams ready and to be on standby, all things permitted. He also spoke about the fact that in the fall, there are five coaches on five sports. Unfortunately, two of those sports do not have coaches. We are actively going to be seeking out those two coaches for those sports. He talked about the benefit of having an assistant who might be willing to float and help out. We also want to make sure that there is first aid training as well as training related to COVID-19. We want to make sure that that happens. We're partnering with the nurses and Karen Brand. She's assisting with that. One of the big concerns with the fall sports is around this transportation. And we talked about that at length today. So how do you transport, let's say, 120 students on a cross-country meet? We talked about that in depth. We talked about perhaps we would go to parents and express our concerns. Hopefully that there'd be optional transportation needed for those students that needed it. We also talked about perhaps parents might be willing to assist. We talked about potentially carpool, carpools. We talked about working with Primex and getting a clearance. And obviously, there might have to be a sign-off or a liability waiver if we are doing carpooling of any sort. We talked about if in fact we did have to close and there were no winter sports, might we be able to use that money to help defray costs in the spring sports, anticipating there might even be a greater response? Bottom line is, we want to, we want to support the sports as much as we can. The, the biggest concern around sports was how do kids get dressed with locker rooms being closed? That was our conversation today. So where do the kids get dressed? So there are those limitations with our locker rooms. At this time, you are, we are able to do everything remotely, whether that be the sign-ups, those online contracts. Cheryl Solari is assisting us with all of that. We're watching, and we would open it, open it early, watch those numbers and see what happens. Obviously, had a very in-depth conversation with Marriott Food Service, talking about what does that look like in the fall when we were back in and looking at, you know, what, what we would more than likely, we'd be able to serve breakfast in the cafeteria. We may need to redesign what those cafeterias look like to enforce social distancing. But we would do that. We're looking at a grab-and-go situation for lunches. And that, and that be the case, we would have the students eating in classes. There'd be an order ahead. There would be one hot lunch option, one cold lunch option. Those would be delivered by food service workers. You know, Mary talked about things like masks and gloves and PPE and sanitizing, all of that stuff would be important to uphold the state and the CDC guidelines. We also talked about the cleaning up and what that meant for facilities. It was discussions around that. Speaking of facilities, Keith is obviously an invaluable asset and he serves on this committee. He is obviously looking at things like Plexiglas in high-traffic areas like front office. Also Plexiglas in places like in the nurse's office, in the new SAU office. We talked about touch-free faucets in the restrooms. Again, we've started to receive orders under the CARES Act and from the federal government for PPE. We got a beginning order. Mrs. LaSard is putting in for a second order. Things like thermometers, gowns, face shields, masks, all of those things. We talked about the fact that under the CDC guidelines, should we have a student that we were concerned about who happened to have a temperature? We would need to have quarantine or isolation rooms. So looking at all of those nurses' areas and figuring out what we might do for Marston and Center. Hampton Academy being recently renovated, they have the best physical space for the isolation, the quarantining. Center in Marston, we'd have to look at privacy rooms and what we might use to accommodate that. Obviously, Keith is looking at things like electrostatic equipment so that we could ensure that we are keeping the surfaces clean. We talked about how that impacts what's on counters. It was conversations about that. And then of course, moving forward, we want to have conversations about our school calendar, looking at possibly adjusting that as we consider the current calendar that's been approved. We're also looking at attendance and can we have clear expectations for students, parents and teachers about that? Should we go to remote? We also talked about guidance around absenteeism and returning to school. We're going to have Karen and the nurses look at that. So for example, if we were in school and a student was sick, what would be the, the protocol for having that student return to school? And I think Karen and the nurses are going to look at some, looking at developing protocols and making recommendations to our committee. And then of course, schedules. One of the things that we heard from parents is that schedules are helpful for everybody because it helps with expectations. So we want to make sure that we can come up with some clear guidelines. Obviously, and then finally, the last thing was our screening process. What are we going to do to ensure that we're looking at things like temperatures? We're looking at masks, so screening processes for when students enter the school. Are we taking their temperatures? Are we not taking their temperatures? The nurses again want to look at that and make their recommendations. So we'll be looking forward to working with the nurses around that. And that includes not only students, but obviously for our staff and for any substitutes that may come into our building or any visitors. So how do we, how do we ensure that, you know, we're adhering to all of those CDC guidelines along with those state guidelines? So kind of just an overall big picture of those different areas. And you can see it's, it's pretty vast. We all want to come back to school. I, I don't have to tell you that. Everybody wants to come back to school. And we will do everything we can to adhere to those guidelines and try to come back and have a safe school for our students, but it's going to look very different. If anyone has been watching Boston Channel 5 News or any of the news stations last night, they're talking about it. School is going to look different in the fall. We all recognize that we want to come back to school. But in order to do so, we want to do that safely and it does mean a change in how we've done business. So I think I've captured everything, but Kathleen and friends, please jump in. Keith, anybody, Mary, if you're online or anyone else?
No, Lois, you did a great job summarizing and the committee is really close to finalizing recommendations. So we'll have that list and hopefully as we continue, we will address all the questions that Lois raised. Thanks, Lois. Appreciate that.
I think Andrea, Andrea.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't see that. Yep.
I just wanted to ask if Keith is there, I have a quick question.
He's going to do a facilities report, Andrea?
Oh, all right, then I'll wait.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, he's up next. So Keith, I, I don't know, I haven't seen you, I haven't seen your face here.
He's here.
There you are. Thank you.
All in, everybody is healthy. We've been having facilities meetings. A lot, all the committees have covered a lot. We're basically more concerned when people do return to the building and that we're preparing and educating our staff to follow and pursue all of the protocols outlined by CDC. But as we all know, those are moving targets on what's going to be important to concentrate on and what isn't. We're trying to cure some of the latest and greatest well-called new chemicals, but proven chemicals that have killed off viruses and have qualified for the SARS-CoV-2, COVID-19, to kill viruses. We are planning on what we put purchase orders in for electric static machines that with a negative positive ion cling to solid surfaces that are horizontal as well as vertical. There will be an educational process, Lois, and had mentioned from the other committees that school classrooms are going to look very different with the social distancing. Then what actually happens in those classrooms is another discussion as far as, you know, mask on, mask off, when they wash their hands. Service and my concern with six-legged critters and four-legged critters and making sure that, you know, we clean up properly and rapidly. We may have some concerns with having enough staff at different times. I mean, if on how full the buildings are and the different spaces. Do we have more than one person on during the day? How do we handle all the touch points? Round, you know. So, and providing enough paper towels, cleaning, blah, blah, blah. We've been very lucky with the support of the CARES Act that we've been able to move forward with in the toilet rooms, that there are the touchless faucets. So the kids have to turn on and off the water themselves. Our paper towels will staff feeding. And we have hands-free trash cans which are just open so they can drop the paper towels in. Obviously, there's different protocols when you're talking about the health offices. And it will certainly be a little bit different when we collect after lunches and snacks. There's a lot going on, but basically we look forward to the, the students getting back on a roll. We're working with the rec department for the summer program. And I think we've all had little sidebars in that this is actually a little microcosm, a pilot program to see how it is to have people back in the building and how we work through that. So I mean, it's a great thing for us to observe as the summer goes on. So there we go. There's probably a lot of things I'm not covering, but a lot of it's just minutia. But we plan to try to have the cleanest and healthiest buildings that we can. Thank you. Andrea?
Is, is that electrostatic equipment, is that like an ozone piece of equipment and does it cover a large space like a classroom and how often do you use it?
Those are some really good questions. No. Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to atomize some cleaning disinfectant product that makes droplets that will, as negative and positive carbon molecules will attract to each other. And that goes onto the surface and it will stay wet for about three minutes as it evaporates and goes through the surface and then we wipe down the hard surfaces. We have ordered, hopefully, because it's high demand, as you know. They're backpacks and they're battery-operated, so easy to move around. And they can do 8,000 square feet. Now, it sounds like a lot, but it's not a lot because each classroom's 1,000 square feet. It's less than 1,000, but we're talking about, you know, 800 to 1,100 on the space. It's basically, we would hit the hard surfaces, the desktops, the wall things, the wall things, hit the doors and go through the building. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, would it have to be done daily or weekly or after each class?
There aren't any protocols on that right now. As you, as you know, if there was a case identified in one of our buildings, that space or the building would probably be closed down for 24 hours for a deep cleaning. That's when that's essential.
Okay.
I do anticipate there will be a lot of excitement about the new equipment and to try it out and use it. And we are just going to join along with the rest of facilities teams across the state of New Hampshire. And we're, we're talking about what we're doing and what we're not doing, what's going to work best because it's such a new area. What we're getting is very similar to what the Red Sox use in locker rooms during flu seasons and everything. And it actually is a great tool for when we get back to have just normal flu. So that we can take care of the buildings and reduce that.
How much do these?
There are a lot of protocols if we get exposure. And I spoke in our meeting today, I, I want this, this is my hope that we never have any in our building, that we keep it all outside of our buildings. But with that, probably get one case. So I, I think that's a great tool to have in our toolbox to help fight the, the viruses. Man power is probably, man, woman power, staff power is probably the most important thing for facilities to be able to touch and clean all of the surfaces that other people have touched.
How much do the electrostatic, how much does that equipment cost?
Well, it's about $1,700 for each piece of equipment that we have ordered.
And how many, how many, how much of the equipment have you ordered?
We've got three on order, one for each building.
You might need more.
Yeah, well, we're, we're on a waiting list for three more should we need. No one's promised they can deliver. We're in a waiting list with everybody else, but we are, we have three in the queue in production.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Frank?
Frank? What do you do if the equipment doesn't work? Do you have a backup?
Well, I think we go back to Elgries. I think the, the idea of the machine is to help accelerate the application of the, we don't want sanitation, it is disinfecting. So we go back to using our HTTB or the product we're going to put in the machine, which is a product that kills HIV/AIDS, tuberculosis, flu and viruses, SARS-1. And it is clear to do COVID-19. And we'll just put it in spritzer bottles and let that settle and do the same way. With the machine is just accelerates it and helps on vertical spaces.
No, I, I understand that, but what's the life expectancy of one of these machines?
I would hope that we get more than a couple of years out of it. You know, a lot of it's new technology.
Okay, so wouldn't it be advisable to have a backup in each building? Only because if something does occur, you don't want everybody running around with spray bottles.
No, we don't. But we're, we're on, we're in the queue for three additional, but they can't promise that me, I'm going to get it by the time school starts. But we have eight in the line and we have three. We're hoping to get three for each building because I like, actually, I like the power of three. You break yourself the third, but that's too hopeful, I guess. I don't know.
Are these the same machines that the towns ordered?
Well, I don't know what the town ordered. Kathleen and I talked about this briefly because the town had ordered some machines who are a little less expensive, but they're probably not trying to cover the area we are. You know, ours is a backpack model so that we can cover 8,000 square feet cordless, so they're not plugging in and unplugging everywhere so they can do more freely. I know theirs are probably half our cost, but they probably only hold a quart of chemical at one time.
Okay.
So if I may, if I may just jump in here for a minute?
Absolutely.
You're just giving us an update as to where you are and where your group is right now. You're not, you're not offering the final details, et cetera, et cetera. And it seems to me that you're in a tough position because every time you solve one problem, you've probably created two more different problems. So continue to do your best as we know you will and good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's support for the facilities. Thank you.
And thanks, Keith. And our last report comes from the, the subcommittee on technology. Greg's going to do that for us.
Thank you, everyone. As our team met, we discussed, as, as everyone else has said, the desire to get back in the building with students and that's where we'd love to go. But regardless, I always have to focus my, my subcommittee on technology. And let's look at this from a technology point of view. And what came back to us is that we're fortunately in a really good spot when it comes to technology. We were already one-to-one grades three to eight and had plans put in place at the end of the school year and now going to summer to be one-to-one grades K to K to eight. So every student will have a device regardless of whatever is decided. So if we go back into the classroom as normal, if everything just went away or if we went to hybrid model or we had to go back or if we went to hybrid model or we had to go back to uh remote learning, every student could have a device. But with that brings a renewed uh sense of, of desire to use technology, right? So all of these teachers have now been exposed to what technology can do. And with the right technology in their hands, how much uh learning can be transformed? So with that, it comes additional costs regardless of any of this situation, right? So people have been using new software and have realized the power of it and, and would like access to it next year. So a lot of what we talked about is things that need to be added or desired to be added that weren't budgeted in for the year. Take, for example, uh, the tool we're using right now, video conferencing. Um, this is free from, from uh Google. It's also being offered a similar uh platform from Zoom, free till September thirtieth by both of them. After that point, there is a charge. Um, I was hard to track down. Anybody could give us some information on what the cost would be. But Dave just got yesterday from me uh in a chat uh what with Google, what the cost would be. And uh they're quoting normally that uh Google Hangouts is free for education. Um, and, and in our G suite for education subscription that includes meat, yeah, you, you get uh we shouldn't have to pay for meat because it comes with it. But what we do is we don't get recordings like we're doing now. Uh, we, we wouldn't get live streaming. And you're limited to a, a hundred participants per meeting. So like when we talk about having that staff meeting next week, it would max out at a hundred. If we want to have, what we're currently getting is the free, uh, free version up until September thirtieth is the, is the Cadillac version, let's say. Where you can have up to two hundred and twenty-five people, you can live stream and you can record meetings like we're doing now. Um, that price normally is forty-eight dollars per user uh per year. So per staff member and per student. They are offering a deal that we have to commit to soon. Uh, by July thirty-first in 2020, that it would only be twenty-four dollars per user for faculty and students would be free. So um, these are things that we need to make decisions on soon and commit to uh to help save money and to get access to. Some of the other things we also talked about were additional uh hardware, right? So um, you, you have staff members who said our document cameras we had at home when we were doing remoting were great, but they broke. Uh, we need some more document cameras, uh, even if we get into schools, some additional document cameras. But things like that are being scooped up by everybody across the nation. So you have to make a decision. Do you buy some of those things now? Once again, stuff that wasn't planned as it wasn't as much of a demand for it when it was before COVID, uh, things that weren't in the budget. So finding some money for that. Uh, training is a big issue. So uh now teachers know about all of what they can do. They'd like to know how to do it better. Um, so there's a big request for training, 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 and especially before school starts either way, how do we get them into schools uh during the summer when they're now off uh to get some of that training done? Something that would have to be negotiated uh through, through the union to help compensate them for time that's normally not time if they're in the building unless we change our training schedule. We also talked about, uh, as was mentioned earlier, you know, reusing some of the, the staff differently. So Michelle talked about that. Um, we, we talked about, is it possible to take some of those computer teachers and make them technology facilitators? And now they can be some of those people that could provide that training in district and could, could be that support. And I spoke with the uh there's in all three schools and there seemed to be a, a positive reaction towards that being a possibility. Um, we also looked at uh narrowing down the tools as Michelle talked about, you know, trying to create some sort of a unified uh decision on what tools we were using. And um it, it, a, a way that parents could know, hey, this is where my student is going to be uh using a platform, this is how it will look. And this is where I can find, find some support on it. So trying to create a uniform look on all of that. So a uniform place for support, a uniform way that my, my assignments get posted and the uniform software that everybody's using would help the parents being able to support their children when they're at home. We uh have to start looking though at, at some of the cost of even in a hybrid model. So um if we went back to school, right, and then it was a hybrid model, what does that mean? So there are so many different versions of a hybrid model that there was some discussion about, does that mean that a student who decides to stay home because of a compromised immune system or somebody in the household or a teacher who decides to stay home because of a compromised immune system for them or someone in the household? Do we provide the same ability to connect them? So in, in a scenario where, okay, let's say a student is staying home, maybe twenty percent of the students stay home. Some of your kids in the class, are they learning synchronously with the rest of the class? And do we have to have a camera set up so the teacher can teach at the front of the classroom while the kids at home see it? Or is the teacher expected to maintain that online platform in their LMS like Google Classroom at the same time as teaching and then have to answer questions by students after the day's over? Um, so a lot of it gets pretty complicated, right? Um, you, you can look at saying, okay, to minimize that, can we add some additional equipment such as camera work? Well, in order to not put a person in every classroom at a tripod, then you could get robotic cameras. But those are already on back order to the end of the summer. So making some of these decisions pretty soon helps me in getting the equipment in the hands of people for if we're going to do some sort of hybrid model, if we need that equipment. Because as has been said throughout all of this, everybody's scooping up this stuff as we talk and it's getting harder and harder to get it before school begins. So there's a lot to figure out in a very short amount of time. Um, and hopefully we, we can have a decision soon as the direction that we can go is we can start to make some of those purchases and, you know, decisively say this is where we're going to put the money. Because a lot of this is just not in the budget from what we talked about in September because no one expected this. And now we have to talk about balancing, uh, reshuffling the equipment that has been used. Say, what can we get rid of and use instead? Or, or maybe where can we take money that it wouldn't be needed to help pay for some of these expenses? So. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Greg.
Oh, I forgot one last thing. Um, also, if we are taking temperatures, uh, the cost of kiosks. So those are about two to three thousand dollars for temperature kiosks. And yeah, all that stuff is once again being purchased as we speak, so getting harder and harder to get, so.
Thanks, Greg. Les, that, that really is a quick overview of all the work they've done since the beginning of May. And um, so I think that uh they, the goal is, is to formulate actual recommendations over the next week. Uh, finalize all the recommendations relative as much as they can, given the scenario um to, uh, to provide uh some direction for returning. So this, tonight's was a summary. Kind of a sneak preview.
Now, I, I think I'm going out, I know I'm going out of order, out of uh the order of the agenda, but I suspect that there's a lot of parents that are at our virtual, virtual meetings. So I'd like to open it up to public comment based on the discussion that we've just had. But I would ask people to keep their comments brief. Um, no more than three minutes, that would be great. And let's see if we have any parent comments or community.
Les, would, would you like them to state their name before they ask their comment?
I, that would help.
Yes.
So, so Greg, you're going to direct them our way.
Sure. Do, if, do we have anybody with a comment? Maybe you can uh put it in the chat and then I can uh welcome the, the people I see in the chat as I see them. And just state your name and ask your, your question if you have one. Chat can be found on the left, on the right-hand side. Uh, this is in the bubble says chat, just type your, you have a comment in there and I will introduce you if you have one. Don't see anybody leave me a comment yet.
All right, well, we'll have another public comment.
I have a Marissa Christie uh who has asked her questions via the chat. Uh, Marissa, would you like me to read the questions out or would you like to take yourself off mute and ask it yourself? Uh, she's left the meeting, so let me read her question. Says, uh, would the committee be able to share the results of the survey parents took? Uh, specifically which return to school scenario receives the most votes? That was her request.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I dropped off the call. I appreciate you reading it.
No problem.
So my, my question for Marissa is, Marissa, wh- which survey are you talking about? Are you talking about the one that the district did initially at the three schools? Or are you talking about the survey that the state, that we sent out from the state?
I think I'm did it, was it an abbreviated uh SSRT, something like that?
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So, so the survey that you filled out um was the state survey. They received um nearly sixty thousand responses to that survey. So they have a company that's um taking all of that information and collating it. Earlier on in the meeting, I think I mentioned that they were a little bit delayed in their work because they were waiting for the survey. So as soon as that information and the results of that survey come, I will, I, I will get a copy of them and I will make sure that, that we send it out to all the parents. So
That's great.
To this point, we don't know yet, so.
When you do receive that, do you expect it to be broken down by SAU?
Uh, no. Uh, but it, but I, the question that we asked on Friday, uh, we had a meeting with the commissioner um was that it would, would give us some regional information. So let's say the Southeasters and the Southeastern superintendents are really trying to work together on this to have a, a plan that we are all kind of synced on. So we'll get you that information. I will tell you that locally, the feedback I'm getting about hybrid uh plan, parents aren't in love with the hybrid. Uh, and so I, I just, it came up at the PTA meeting, uh, last two PTA meetings um that I attended and uh they are not in love with that because of it's you're in a few days, out a few days, uh, rotations, you know, so uh, I didn't hear, and it's hard. If you're working, you go back to work, your kids go to school for two or three days and then wait a minute, they're home again. And how do you manage that? So um, that was just some uh anecdotal feedback we got the other night, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have another question from Nicole C D. Um, I don't know if she wants to get on and, and uh voice it herself or if not, I can read it. Nicole, if you'd like to speak just to me, you can go ahead. Okay, I guess she's not coming on. She says, thank you, just to reiterate, mid, uh, mid-July into August, that decision will be made. So she's looking to see when the date is, we're looking to make.
Well, you know, uh, with our, with our fingers crossed. Um, we hope that we have all the data we need from all the, the, the experts and be able to finalize that plan. I mean, we have to be prepared. We have to be prepared. Do you hear it, everybody? Um, the teachers need to be prepared. We need to get all the, the equipment ordered. We have to make sure that we have all the safety precautions in place as Keith described. So we need that time too.
Anyone else have a question?
I'm not seeing any in the chat, Les, just so you know.
Okay.
All right.
Well.
Greg, there's two more questions. There are more.
Yeah, in the chat room. There is, I apologize. So Lisa Ara Killian, am I saying that right? I hope so. Uh, she asks, what will be done for those parents like myself that are working full-time? If we have to do any part of virtual learning? It was extremely hard for the past eleven weeks to juggle work for uh in my kids' learning. Also, how will you make sure all the disinfectants being used on a daily basis in the school are not harmful to our kids?
Well, we, we certainly recognized the difficulties that our families faced this year. Those thirteen weeks, twelve weeks, thirteen weeks have been very difficult. Because in fact, Lisa, you're right. People were working full-time and then trying to monitor and support their kids at home who had lessons that were being delivered, you know, via uh the remote instruction. So we know that's very difficult. And that's one of the reasons I think hybrid plan didn't really, you know, win over everyone. Our goal is to bring the kids back. Everybody wants the kids back. Um, in, in, in response to the disinfectants that Keith is using, Keith has those all, those are all approved. The, the things we use right now during flu season are all approved. They're, they're high quality. Trust me, they're very expensive. They're all high-quality product uh that his team uses to clean the buildings. So um, we, we uh, um, we know that they would not harm the kids. We also, a lot of that cleaning will be done when the kids aren't in the rooms. You know, they're gone for the day, the custodians go in, sweep through the building, clean all the rooms. Um, and, but during the day, they will be in bathrooms, hallways, doorknobs, all that kind of things that the kids use every day. So um uh, those are great questions.
We have another question from Nicole Enright um who asked, in the suggestions, are you considering those parents that are working in not home to support their child as a teacher? I found that there are parents that were working all day and the child was left to be independent with their learning.
Well, that, that's a good question, Nicole. Um, it, you know, you understand, you, you, you know, being a teacher, you understand what you had to do. Um, and there were students that did not have um supervision and we know that. Um, we're very well aware of that and, and the teachers made that uh provided that information to their principals when they didn't see youngsters on regularly. So we knew that the supervision was probably not there. Um, as you heard, we were trying, we will, um, several of the people that reported out tonight talked about the training that we would like to do for parents to give them some strategies on um, on different aspects to the, to the remote learning. Uh, again, uh, no one's happy about the kids being home and, and with, with, as you suggest, are not supervised. Uh, and our goal is to bring them back.
Any additional questions by anybody out there that would like to ask it?
We will have uh an additional public comment later on in the, in the agenda. Um, so I think we should move on and maybe get a quick update from Mariah uh about finances. Mariah, are you with us?
I am. Hello.
Okay.
How are you?
I'm welcome, thank you.
We have a few weeks left to the fiscal year ends. Um, but as of the end of May, everything um was staying steady. Nothing really, my, my guest estimate and everything from last month um was right on track. So right now I'm just working on getting all outstanding invoices in um and completed and finished and grants tidied up to finalize numbers um for the year. I've also sat with Nathan uh last Wednesday. I'm hoping to pull him back in this Wednesday so that we can get you some final numbers next month um for the building project. Uh, so very busy. Um. And then I did send, I'm not sure if you got that, uh, the, the food, the summer food service breakdown of some options. Um, but after I sent that to you, uh, Mary sent me an email and we did get approved um for a summer seamless. With that said, there's still going to be some options of uh cost because the buses won't be covered under seamless feeding and we are delivering right now. And so Mary did a um, we sent out a questionnaire and we had um seventy-eight replies or seventy um students that want to be fed, but out of the seventy-eight, only fourteen of them would pick up the food at the school. So.
So Mariah, Mariah?
Yep.
Mariah, I can just ask a question. So are we looking at option two?
That would be option two. Um, if, if you want to be able to bust out the food, it would cost us around ten grand. Give or take.
Okay. Would some, I, I know the board has discussed this. Would someone like to make a motion that uh we approve that amount for the summer meals?
Les, can I just add one thing to that? There's a reminder that uh with the remote learning still happening during the summer, if any equipment has broken during uh the remote learning during the school year, it was swapped out when parents couldn't come to the school and pick it up via a bus. So without buses and if summer school is still going on remotely during that time, it would only leave parents with the option to come to the school to pick up the device when it broke and needs to be swapped out if that happens very soon. Just a reminder.
Well, this is with buses delivery. Um, any board member? Um, any board member want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, appropriate that money for the, the bus for the food.
Okay, so is that the $10,076?
Correct.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Second, Pepper?
Yes.
Discussion, discussion?
Uh, Les?
Right?
Where's the $10,000 coming from?
It would be coming out of the next year's budget.
And is that gonna, so we're taking the money out of next year's budget, but we don't know what next year's budget looks like?
Right.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it's enough to cover this.
But we.
Well.
Go ahead, Ginny.
We just.
I'm throwing it out.
We just heard Keith Lasad say he needed all kinds of stuff for facilities. Greg will need some stuff, technology. So how do we know? And yes, we have $10,676, but how do we know that we're not gonna earmark that for something else? I mean, I don't know. I think that this is a year that.
Well, I, 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 I understand, I understand your point, Ginny. Um, and I know Keith and Greg, it's not that their needs aren't important, but I think with kids proceeding now, but that's just my opinion.
Well, my opinion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ginny.
I mean, we have 76 people that are getting it. Correct, Mariah?
So you have, so the questionnaire said 78 people want it. However, right now, Mary is, um, slowly on a decline of people picking up the stuff because summer's happening and people say they want it and then never show up. So I'm just afraid that we say yes to these 78 students and then we pay for all of the employees to be there and we pay for the food and then it's not needed or people are away or they don't call up and let us know and then we're wasting and it, and, and I don't want to be in that position either. Um, and also if, this is based on 78 students. We do not know if we're gonna have 78 students. This is like, this was out of a questionnaire. So if you take, say you take 50 students, right? And we still have to pay the same amount on the buses, the same amount on payroll, maybe a little bit less on food, it's gonna cost us more because you're only getting, um, reimbursed for 50 meals rather than 78 meals. So the more people you feed, yeah, the, the, the costs and everything will balance out and not be as much, but the less people you feed, we're gonna end up having more of an expense.
Well, I understand that, Mariah, but my concern is, okay, it's $10,700. I'm rounding, okay, for the $24. Yet, everything that was presented today on each of the committees is gonna cost us some money. Technology, facilities for the chemicals. And we have no clue where we are until sometime in July financially. Is, is that correct, Ginny?
That's correct, Frank.
All right, so why are we, and I'm not trying to be, you know, mean about feeding people because I think we should, but if we don't have the money to do it with and we don't know what the money is, where's it gonna come from? Because we might be in a deficit next year.
So you have option one, we feed the students, we qualify for seamless, but we don't deliver and the cost won't, it will pretty much break even depending on how many meals we have. My other thought was that if we have one other location where people come to pick up, so we have two locations to pick up at the school and then maybe at another location where one of the food service, um, employees gets paid to go there and, and hand it out, then our costs will be probably break even. So I mean, there is option one.
Any other comment? Kathleen, Lois?
Yeah, I did, I, I did have a comment, Les. Um, I, I want you, I, the, the, some of the things that Keith talked about tonight, uh, the equipment, uh, he, um, we definitely can take it out of FEMA. That's absolutely, that's, that's coming out. Everything like he talked about tonight, all the cleaning products, all of that stuff is coming out of FEMA. We have a, a list right now that we will, um, submit to cover those costs. But I, I, I'm a, I, we have 14 parents that indicated that they would come and pick up the meals of those 78. So you're talking about 64 parents that want it delivered. So just, just to give you a, a, you know, a, a point, uh, to, to see how that will play out. We also have a pickup every Thursday at Center School because all summer long, the Gather Food Program will be at Center School to distribute food for the entire week. Um, although 68 hours of hunger isn't working over the summer, uh, they, uh, uh, the Gather Food Program will. So there are some options for us. Um, I wish we could tie down, uh, the number of parents that really need the food delivered. Or was it just a convenience kind of thing?
Well.
So.
This is all, this cost is all directed.
All right, Frank, 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 hold on. Lois, your thoughts?
Lois, you're on mute.
Yep, thank you, just needed a minute. Um, so I, I think that we, we talk about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? What's, what are, what are the basic needs that people need? People need food. We know, we know we have families that are not working. We know that, um, there are a lot of families in the Seacoast that are having hard times. Um, I hate to think that we have, we have families that need food. We have children that need food. We, we, and we're not gonna do our part. Um, at the same token, I hear what you're saying with, um, how many, how many of those, again, is it a convenience or is it necessity? Do we, and how do we find that out?
Well, I think the intent, Ginny, and just a minute, I think the intent of the motion is it's a not to exceed amount, $10,000, I'll round off with Frank, $10,700. It's not to exceed that. And if we can get it, Mariah, if we can get it cheaper than that, some people have put in some comments about ways that we might be able to get that done cheaper, um, that would be fine. So just, just to clarify that. Frank, I think you had a comment.
No, no, as I said, I'm not opposed to feeding people, okay? I'm just opposed to spending money that may not be there. That's all, that, that's all, okay?
Ginny?
But i- if there's a way for them to pick up, if there's, if there can be a delivery by volunteers, that's all good, good. If we have to go to three different distribution points to help, that's fine. It's just, okay, cost factor associated with the delivery.
We, we just had.
Ginny.
Oh, sorry.
Can.
Ginny.
Can private people volunteer to drive or distribute food?
I, I don't see why not, Ginny. I, I think we have plenty of volunteers that do things and I thought that was a great suggestion that just came in. Um, and we can see if, I have, tell you, people have offered to help. They've raised money, they've made donations to cover people. Uh, Frank, you asked about the, the PTA money. That money is covering the people right now that we are currently paying for. So it's kind of used up, but, um, no, I think we, we can get a volunteer group to help us.
So you answered the $9,000 isn't available. It's already been used, right?
From the PTA, right? It covered the costs of those families that were not on free and reduced.
Yep.
The hundred and, of those 115, not all of them were free and reduced. So that money helped cover those costs.
Could we deliver every other day? Could we deliver every other day?
Sure.
Sure. So, so just, I, I think every, I think everybody understands the, the question. Um, there's been a motion in by Andrea, seconded by, um, Pepper, that, um, we allocate no more than $10,676 towards the Seamless Summer Feeding Program. And if we can get volunteers and we can reduce those costs, great. Everybody understand the, the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all right, I, I'll do it by a show of hands because it's quicker. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, 5-0. And those parents out in the audience who are interested, if they can contact, uh, either, um, Kathleen or Lois or even Mariah, and we'll go from there. And thank you, I see those parents that are saying that they're, they're willing to follow.
Yep.
I hate to be the, um, I don't know, I hate to be the bad guy in this, but could Lois or Kathleen check out about insurance?
Right.
If they're driving to the school.
Right. I actually am gonna do the same thing for the athletics. If we have parents who are willing to carpool kids to games, I told Jim today that I would call Primex to make sure that we were covered. We think we are, we do it in the ski club. Parents drive their kids all the time at ski club. And, and so we're, I think we are covered, but I'll, I'm gonna double check, Ginny.
Yeah, I think I just may need to, um, sign a waiver.
Right, I just want to make sure the waiver is appropriate. You, you know, it's, just have to be careful. But no, that's a great.
There was also a question regarding privacy, definitely, just.
What's that, Greg?
Someone else, there was a question asked, are, are there any privacy issues with parents delivering these meals by Nicole Wilcox?
Yeah, and, and, and she's absolutely right. And there may be some parents that don't want that, so we will double check that. But you're right. Thank you.
Mariah, I, I hated to, to rush you. Um, are you good? Anybody have any further questions for Mariah? Okay, I, I, I want to get some of these things done because we need to. Um, Kathleen, you had a nomination.
Before I do that, can I ask you to, um, as a board, to approve the general assurances that are required in order for us to receive federal money? So I have to have this signed, a motion made, and I submit it to the department in the morning. So if you could do that, that would be awesome.
I'll make the motion.
Frank, seconded?
I'll second.
Andrea? Well, that was the, uh, about 30 pages, that was in, in your packet.
Yeah.
If you read it all, I'd bless you. It was pretty lengthy. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Show of hands, all in favor? 5-0. Okay.
So Les, I'm, I'm, can I keep going? I'd be pleased to place the name of Emily Butchan to the position of social worker for the district starting in September, um, in 2020, '21 school year. Uh, you have her paperwork in your folder. And, um, she was interviewed, uh, several times, uh, by a team from Hampton Academy and all the schools were represented because she's a district position. Uh, and then interviewed by, um, Lois and myself. Uh, and so we're pleased to place her name and nomination.
Can we get a motion first and then we'll have discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Move Frank, seconded, seconded Ginny. Discussion or questions? Ginny?
Okay, if she's starting September 1st, who's covering from July 1st to September 1st?
Well, actually, I said that. Ginny, she has a 220-day contract. So she's available in the summer.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same, uh, number of days that we had for Janine.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? By a show of hands, all those in favor? 5-0. Okay. Kathleen, is there anything else before we go into non-public?
Uh, the only other thing is the policy on suicide. And I, I just put it in the packet for, really for Andrea and Pepper to review because we haven't had our, we usually get together and meet and, and, and have a policy meeting. So it's in the packet for everyone to review and I would say that you would bring this back up in your, at your next board meeting. Any input from Andrea and Pepper at any time, just call and we'll make any adjustments and talk it through, but it's really a, tonight, a very first read.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, um, I spoke too soon. We need to go over the minutes of May 12th, public and non-public. I think we can do them both together. So if I could get a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to accept both minutes.
Frank, second?
I'll second.
Pepper? Discussion? Show of hands, all those in favor? 5-0. Okay. Um, we need to go into non-public.
Before we do that, I just want to bring your attention to a letter that you received, um, uh, from Jen, I think it's Zumba, um, that regarding, I sent it to you all when I received it. She sent it through our technology department and I sent it to you expressing her, um, her desires for the children to get back to school, um, and for, you know, for them to return and how difficult the remote learning was. So I just want to make sure that you have that in your minutes, that you received that letter, communication from a parent.
Right.
Kathleen, she also asked a question that we didn't get, it asked, she asked it right as soon as we left.
Well, and she, she was online earlier, so I don't know if she's.
Yeah.
Still online.
Is it still there?
What was the question?
The, the question that was asked, she said, "Are you considering keeping extras? Art, music, gym, library important for the kids at these imper- presentable ages for social interaction?" I told her that.
Right, I think, yeah, we heard Lois talk about it tonight. Um, you know, there's, there are students that just thrive in those, those areas of the integrated arts and, um, they have been a vital part of the curriculum in Hampton. Uh, I can't imagine, uh, taking those away from the students. Uh, we know that we, and they've asked for more PD, uh, in terms of delivering, uh, their, their areas. But, uh, um, to respond to that, there's been no recommendation that that be taken from the curriculum.
And that was a, that was a great letter that she sent. It's, it's summarized.
Yeah.
A, a great portion of people's sentiment and then there's, of course, the other side, so.
Right.
I, yeah, right now, we need a motion to go into non-public. Someone make that motion?
I'll make the motion to go into non-public.
On Frank, RSA 91A3, Roman numeral 2A, second?
Second.
Second, Ginny. Roll call vote, Andrea?
Sorry, aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
And aye. Okay, I would accept a motion to come out of non-public.
I'll make the motion to come out of non-public.
Move Frank, seconded Ginny. Roll call vote, Pepper?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
And I'm, so we're now back in public.
And who seconded, who seconded that motion? I'm sorry, I'm writing.
I did.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Ginny, seconded by Ginny. Okay, thank you.
And we have to vote on, uh, two things. Okay, the first one is for a parent who wanted a, I'll use the word rebate, on, on his tuition. Okay, anyone like to make a motion?
I would make, I'd make the motion that we deny. I would make, I'd make the motion that we deny the parent from getting any kind of rebate on tuition at this year of, at the junior high school.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded, Pepper. Further discussion, I think we've discussed this quite a bit. Okay. All those in favor of Ginny's motion to deny the request, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, unanimous, five. So, I'm guessing the superintendent will let them know, him know?
And, and when you do, perhaps you could explain about the Sacred Heart and other schools, private schools are not giving those where tuition has been paid from outside.
The second request is for the military, I'm going to call it the military request because board members all know. Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I, I got you same time. Andrea made the motion?
Ginny, second.
I, I didn't hear the motion, Andrea, I'm sorry.
The motion is to allow the student of the military family to finish her, her academic career as an eighth grader at Hampton Academy next year.
And that was seconded by Ginny?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And, and we discussed this in non-public. All those in favor of the motion? Raise your hands. Okay, it's unanimous, 5-0. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I have a-
Hold on.
Frank has got something.
Okay, Frank's got something.
Yeah, I'd like to just go back, discuss the non-public, would said, would you can't discuss it in non-public. So, the bottom line is, should we, we've got all these recommendations going around and I think we need a definitive playbook moving forward. And I think it's going to take a lot of time and effort to move forward on that. Would you agree?
Well, that's why the, we've been working on the committees. We're very close to finalizing a lot and Lois and I have already been discussing a format to put all of those recommendations. You know what, you remember your goal matrix that you have every year that you use, the goals, and then we, we say, okay, how are we going to achieve that? Lois and I decided to use that same format and it might be a little bit longer than your normal goal sheet, right? But it would be a great tool for everybody to have at their fingertips. Okay, we're going to, we're going to return to school. What's going to happen in the facilities? PPE, safety, all the safety measures, temperature taking, you know? We would have that all listed under those. So, Frank, everyone would have in their hands. We'd post it on the website. I anticipate a second forum. I think Lois has said, you know, she'd like to do another forum and share the, the results. So, you are right on. You are absolutely right.
And when can we see something like this? By early July?
No, Frank, not yet. Not yet. Let's have the meeting with the parents. We want our committees to finish up. And then I'm suggesting to you that by mid-July, we should have something.
All right, mid-July, okay.
That matrix, that matrix is a really good format for putting Ginny in.
I have a, I have a motion to make for the pub, for the public awareness, is I would make a motion that a bench would be placed in the gatherings we fought at Hampton Academy to be dedicated in honor of Kathleen Murphy, who served our board so well for nine years. So, people can sit out and watch the flower and just sit out and talk and do whatever they want to do, argue, whatever, but so that she can be remembered and thought that she created. So, I would make that motion.
It wasn't me, it was the community. It was the community that did that.
I don't want to hear about the community right now.
I second that.
Okay. I, I know we've discussed this, so all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay. Now, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Before you do that, Les, there's been a request by Brian Warburton to speak, if possible.
Okay, we've had two public comments, but go ahead, go ahead.
Brian? He unmute. Brian, you need to take it off of mute, so if you click on your picture and hit the microphone, Nope. He's on his phone, it looks like, so.
No, he was online before.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's using a phone as his device. I can only mute him, I can't unmute him, so.
I wonder if he's calling in, Greg, on his phone? Because he can't do the audio piece.
Okay. I, I see, I see another person there.
If he wants to type the question, I can read it, Brian, if you want to do that, if you can hear me. Feel free to-
While he's doing that.
Hold on.
He said, "Hold on," so he's doing something.
Hold on.
I think Kelly's on, but I, I see Kelly Roy, but-
Yes.
Yeah, I think she's all set. Kelly, you all set?
Yes, she's good.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Well, thank you. I, like, I wanted to get, before Brian jumps in again, I just thank you, that was very thoughtful. I'm, I'm, now, I can at least say that, you know, it wasn't one person that did that, it was a wonderful group of people that put together that facility and, but, you know, I'm proud of other things and I think I've shared that with you, certainly the work that was done with curriculum. We worked real, teachers worked really hard on that and the mentor program and I, I love the shock news in Channel 13, you know, that's all been, really, that, that's, that's been fun. So, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Is, is, is Brian on yet, Greg?
He turned his camera off, though, so now, he's still here, but camera's off his microphone.
I like Brian, but can I get a motion to adjourn?
Brian asked to hold on. He did put a thing to hold on. I don't know if we, how long you want to hold on?
Maybe give me a text. I'm going to ask him, please type his question, see if he does that.
All right, he's joining again by phone.
So, here we are. So, if you're on mute on your phone, Brian, you'll need to hit star six to mute or unmute if you can hear that. I cannot unmute you from your phone. There it is.
Hello?
Is this Brian?
Yes, you know, I, I work with this technology all day and I don't know what it is about Google meetings, I'm on Microsoft Teams, but I, I hit mute, I hit, this is what I do for a living, so I'm sorry for that. Listen, I'm actually now calling on the phone. I want to thank Chairman Shepard for letting me just say a few things. The first thing I want to say is, is on behalf of, certainly as chairman of the Budget Committee in the town, wishing Kathleen Murphy the best of luck. By far, I've lived in this community 40 years, she has been the best superintendent this town has ever had, and I'll include SEU 21 in that. But I also want to comment real quickly, excellent meeting tonight, and I, I want to just kind of let you all know that this is a work in progress. And remember that the Budget Committee alone with the voters approved your July 1, 2020, your new budget which starts. So, I would take baby steps because this is going to be new to all of us for both schools and the town, and I'm on the task force with SEU 21 with Bill Lupini, and I know Frank's been on them. Excellent points brought up, but I really believe you're looking at fall timeframe and later on, when you're going to see some budgetary constraints and big decisions that are going to have to be made. So, I'd urge caution, remember, you've already got an approved budget and there are going to be those things that you're not, you're going to need to spend. The other thing I want to remind you all is that all these expenditures that you're speaking to tonight, whether covered by FEMA or other things, that's all well and good, but remember, like the towns, you have to pay for them first. And we're just hoping that all these reimbursements are going to come in a, in a really good amount of time. I think you've got an advantage that your new budget starts July 1 and you've got to next June, so it's not going to be as, I don't think it's going to be as big an issue right away. The town has a much more serious thing because their budget ends in December. I'm, well, as I said to Chairman Shepard, and I think I've, I've said this to Kathleen and others and our great Budget Committee rep, Ginny Brata Russell, we've got a great team in the Budget Committee and we're going to work closely with all of you. You all have my number and with the town and with SEU 21, it's going to be a collective year. We've got a lot of things going on and I just want to reach out and say thank you for allowing me to say a few words and best of luck, Kathleen. I've, I've enjoyed working with you professionally and I, I just think you have been a gem for this community. I wish you all the best of luck. We're all in this together and it's, it's, it's trying times, but I think if we put all our heads together between the schools and the town and certainly as Budget Committee and talking about purses and monies and tax pay, it will do okay. But thank you again, Les, and I'm sorry for the thing, I don't know what went wrong.
That's okay. Okay. Thank you, Brian. Can we get a motion? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Wait for it. Andrea? All those in favor, Frank, 5-0. If not sooner, we'll be meeting again on July 14, 13.
Happy birthday, Frank.
Oh, thanks.
July 14. Bye, everybody.
At this point, I'll stop recording, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.